All right, folks. We are ready to call to order the regular meeting of council Monday, May 26 at 7:05. Looking for approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Just not so quick there, Counselor Lukens. We do have one tiny addition to things that was put in front of you this evening. Item 6.3 will be consideration of a motion further to one that we had made at our last meeting in regards to the closure of the youth custody center on Old Allen Highway there. So with your indulgingness on 6.3, I think we're then good to go for an amended agenda. Second or?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Public participation. Folks, this is your time again at this meeting. You have the opportunity to speak to us. So the microphone is there. Step right up. Don't be shy.
May as well be me. Penny Saunders, 3391 Painter Road, again. Wanted to talk to you with regards to item 6.1 on your agenda. And I've reviewed the draft minutes of the committee of the whole meeting last Tuesday. With the proposed Royal Bay development plan, the new plan, I do take some comfort in your suggestion that Painter Road will not need to go through, even at full buildout. But if I remember correctly, and I didn't go through the plan again from last week, but there was a possibility of having access for transit and possibly emergency service vehicles. Is there provisions in the Royal Bay plan, the new plan for fire station? Yes?
Staff?
A site for the dedicated Royal Bay Fire Department hasn't been located yet, but it's something that staff's brought to the attention of the developer as being desired.
Okay. So it is the intention that there will be a fire station onsite in Royal Bay?
Through you, Madam Mayor, the issue hasn't been finalized with the developer. It would be something that staff would be looking to finalize at the time of rezoning.
Okay. So I know it's not mentioned in the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting with regards to various members' comments on the proposal. I believe Counselor Day did express some disagreement to using Painter Road as a through fair for transit. Yes. I know it's not in the minutes, but I do recall that. So I also would like to express my opinion that I do not wish Painter Road to be used as an access for transit from Royal Bay. It's going to have the same environmental effect as making it a through road for public traffic. It will involve a significant loss of green space in what is currently one of the small amounts of natural green space remaining in that area. It will also significantly involve land preparation and altering in altitude change. As you know, there's a significant altitude difference between Royal Bay and Painter Road as it sits right now. It'll remove what little is left for wildlife and further disrupt the deer, the geese, squirrels, quail. I know the quails annually inhabit, as they are right now, the small grove of trees in front of my house on Painter Road and the deer shelter there. Amending the road for transit and possibly emergency vehicles will result in decreased enjoyment of my property. Our property value will result in a loss of privacy. I'm concerned for the proximity of what could be a proposed road to my house and to that of our neighbors, especially those across from me whose houses are dressed there, but their driveway is on Painter Road. Their backyard actually is, boundary is Painter Road. The loss of the boulevard green space to accommodate the road, as I mentioned above, would destroy that small wildlife habitat area. And the drastic elevation between Royal Bay as it sits now and Painter Road, I assume there'll be some change, but if there's any kind of hill, especially for a transit loss, that's going to be a significant blind spot. My driveway is closely aligned to the Painter-Dressler intersection as it sits right now. So just my very personal opinions I wanted to comment and have on record because I don't really know what's going to happen. And I know it's easy to say, "We don't think this is going to happen," or "This might happen and this might not happen." Thank you for your time. And how is that decided and when is that decided? Would that be part of the transportation plan? Or is that part of the Royal Bay plan as far as to allow other than pedestrian and cycle path access?
Through you, Madam Chair, that would be transportation plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to this item and/or anything else on the agenda? If it is for this item, this is the time to talk to it because when it hits council, it will not be for public.
Thank you. Sandy McLean, I live at 3398 Adlington. Our property backs onto the Royal Bay development. I've read through the draft report from the committee of the whole special meeting that was held, and I see that a number of comments that were made at that meeting are addressed specifically in the report. I am concerned about the very last, and I'm kind of starting from the end and working my way back, about the very last paragraph of the report when it talks about recommendations flowing from the May 20 special meeting. That staff will be directed to work in good faith with the developers to incorporate comments made in the ongoing planning where appropriate. That doesn't say very much to me. It doesn't say what kind of comments. It doesn't say how that would happen, et cetera. Another point that hasn't been addressed, as far as I know, and I wasn't able to go to the May 20 meeting, so I have been looking at minutes and other reports trying to and talking to a couple of people that were there to find out what exactly was presented or what was said. There was a points come up to council about why is this property still under the Mines Act? I've not heard an answer to that. I assume that's beneficial to the developer. I don't know that it's beneficial to the city or the community of Callwood. What is the effect on the authority of the city with the property being under the Mines Act? And is there any effect on tax considerations, bylaws, and other regulations? I, like the majority of the citizens of the community, are not experts on development. So we really rely on the council to explain to us and provide information in clear and conident kind of information so that we understand exactly what is happening, what may be coming next, how it is that we can participate. You know, so I don't find the city's website even particularly helpful. If you know where to look, sometimes you can find what you need, but I find I'm quite often phoning City Hall and saying, "I understand this report was to be there. Where do I find it?" And it's not always in an obvious place. So if you're ever looking at your website with an idea to make it more helpful to the citizens, you know, you might want to form a little committee to have people have a look at that. The other question I have is, or one of them, is where do we look for comments that have been brought up to be addressed? Is there some place, is there a plan that they would be communicated? How would we know unless we come to every possible open meeting what exactly is going on and when something might be on the schedule to be addressed? I don't find, you know, searching through council process, trying to figure out where and when, isn't all that easy. And I've talked to a couple of counselors who often don't even have an answer to that. Even the, I even have a question about public participation on the agenda. I understand because it's been stated that, you know, it's not a place for discussion. But I'd like to know who set up the protocol or what bylaws is it under? Is there rules of order? You know, what is governing how the public participates in council meetings? Really, I think you're asking us to come here, have something to say. We're not really ever, how do we know that it's been listened to, it's been considered yes or no? Sometimes you just need to say no to people so that they know they need to go to something through a different venue perhaps. I noticed that there's a considerable decrease in the activity at the development since last week's meeting. I don't want to be cynical, but can I assume after tonight's meeting, if things are passed, there's going to be an increase in activity? You know, I'm not really sure where all of that stands, but anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else's participation? Mr. Hugh?
Hi, I'm Jeff Hugh. I am the representative of the ownership at Royal Bay and just like to make myself here. I'm here along with Paul Fenske of Aki sticks. And we just like to thank council for receiving our application and your review of the application tonight. We'd like to thank staffs, especially the engineering department and the planning department. And it's been a real long road to bring Royal Bay forward. And this is just the beginning. I acknowledge some of the neighbors that are here, and we heard loud and clear from them last week. And we know that this is just the starting point. We have to do better to keep our neighbors happy. We're trying to find solutions right now. I know communications were brought up last week, and we heard loud and clear. There's still the dust and the vibration. So we acknowledge that, and we just want to let council, staff, and the neighbors that are here tonight that we are working together and we would like to move Royal Bay forward. This is just the beginning. This is a very challenging project in all respects, both from a financial respect, public relations, dust, weather, and it hasn't been easy on a lot of people. And staff has been working very hard as well. I'd like to acknowledge them as well. But I think it's very important to consider how important this application is for the city and for all of us to move forward on a very steady and positive light tonight and going forward. This is just a first step in a long, long process, and we want to make the right step. And we corporately will also consider improving how we deal with the neighborhood and moving forward. So if there are any questions, Paul Fenske, our planning consultant, he's here, and I'm here as well. So thank you very much, and we look forward to council's endorsement of our application tonight.
Thank you. And is there anyone else in the audience that has anything to bring forward?
Hello, Madam Mayor, my name is Dan Quigley, counselors. I speak against this application, and I know Jeff and James, we've been talking about this issue for some time. And the words that I've just heard, "We will consider, we may get back to you," I've heard this from this developer. And neighbors, counselors, you have to live there, know what we're going through, okay? This is not a good neighbor, has not been a good neighbor, okay? We have no plans. We don't know what they're doing down there. We have no communication with them. We'd like to have communication. We have damages to our home. We have dust concerns, not just for ourselves, but for our children, okay? I don't know where the municipality sits with the Mines Act, who's in control, if it's actually you, Madam Mayor, or is it somebody else that's in control of the developer or how this works? And I'd like to know for myself how it works with the Mines Act. Now, where do I find this information? I'm asking the question. Question was asked, and everyone in here sits unfounded. I'd like to know before I leave this podium. Does anybody know here?
Madam Chair, might I offer to speak with the resident at an appropriate time? I can provide you with my contact information or speak after the meeting if you'd prefer.
Okay. I'll make it Jeff.
Okay.
The question I have for you, Madam Mayor, is we live there, and in fact, you've been to my home, okay? And I thank you for that. You've seen the vibration, you've seen the dust, you've seen the damage to my homes, okay? I appreciate Jeff wants to consider doing something, but actions speak louder than words, and nothing has happened to this date. He has come to our house, and he's left the house and said, "We'll get back to you at some other point in time." It's not good enough. I want to see this council look this developer in the eye and say, "You know what? These are people. These are their homes. This is where their children live. They're taxpayers. Before we give you, grant you time and time again, you have to show, demonstrate to us that you're a good neighbor and they're not. And when they do, then I'm on side with them because I'm not opposed to this development. Trust me. I think it's great for our city, but I want a little respect. And I think this council needs respect because from the people that I talk, you're losing respect because you're not putting them, you're putting them first before the people that are paying taxes to you." That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last and final chance.
Brian Case, 3515, Promenade Crescent. I overlooked the Royal Bay development, and since the developers are here, I have a question for anyone, but it's something that's really baffled me in terms of logistics. Last fall, there was a lot of earth moving and a lot of contouring of the land. And then it was overseeded, hydroseeded, and everything which is coming up this spring. And all of a sudden, it looked like, to me, like the whole process started from scratch again. All the seeded land was dug up and moved, and it hasn't been reseeded yet. So I'm totally baffled as to the logistics of this. Any answer here?
Jeff, can you be in touch with Mr. Case?
And I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Quigley. I have some new information for you that I'd like to talk to you about after the meeting, okay? And in terms of the hydroseeding, where we have the meadows, which is the area from a chosen road to the school, that particular parcel of land, half of it is what we call requiring preload. So one half of the site, the soil was there just there on a temporary basis, and over the spring, for geotechnical purposes and for preparing the site for development, the surcharge or preload had to be moved to the east part of the site. So it was something that we had always intended to do, and the plan is still to reseed the entire Royal Bay, so it is green at some point.
Thank you. So I'll make this one last and final chance for public. And seeing none, we will move on into the next part of our agenda. Mayor's message. I do have notification, public open house at our Callwood Fire Station on Sunday, June the 8th, from 10:00 a.m. till 2:00. For any of you who have attended in the past, it's a great place for families and kids, and they do fire truck rides, fire extinguish demonstrations, hose and targets. There's a bounce house. The museum will be open, auto extrication demonstrations, emergency preparedness information. So they've got full-on barbecue going on at lunchtime by donation for Cops for Cancer. So I hope that you can make your way out there and enjoy that. The other thing, I wanted to thank Mr. McNeil for his little video here that will be up on our website Saturday. Dwayne and I participated in the Memorial Ride for Fallen Riders that wound its way through Callwood and our neighboring municipalities and ended in a bench dedication at the Callwood-Hatley Park Memorial Gardens in there. So we got some, not helmet cam stuff, but motorcycle pro cam ride information. So we'll give that to Sandra, and she can load it up on there. Counselor Cullington, you have a couple of messages.
Thank you. I did. I just wanted to acknowledge and say thank you, and they're not in the audience, but a great number of volunteers, including actually many from outside of Callwood, came and helped out at a broom pool in Havenwood Park on the weekend. And I've got the before and after photos, and it really makes a fantastic difference. And it was nice because one of the residents who lives adjacent to us where we were working came out and brought us all bottles of water to say thank you. So I think that was a nice recognition from the neighbors that folks were doing it. Of course, next year, I'll be knocking on their door and saying, "Why aren't you out here pulling broom with us?" The other thing I wanted to say is it is Bike to Work Week. The Callwood logo, Rob, is on the back.
It looks great above the left.
They're laughing because he wouldn't approve the contribution unless it had a Callwood logo on the back, so I'm just pointing out to him that it really is there. There is a Bike to Work Week celebration station in Callwood tomorrow from 4:00 until 6:00. It's on the Galloping Goose at Aldine, just outside the Royal Roads entrance. I expect to see all of you there, and that includes members of council. And just so that you're all aware, I have, you probably know I do regularly ride my bike to work, even though it's not terribly far. I have issued a challenge to all of my council colleagues and any senior staff who feel like joining in, that I do expect to see them here on two wheels at some point during this week, even those of you who have to ride up hills. Thank you.
And the other one to mention that I have is the Goddess Run that happens on June 1st. So do we have any runners this year? We've had runners in the past. Anyways, June 1st, there'll be lots and lots of entertainment on our streetways while they do the run. So congratulations to those ladies too and all their helpers. Moving into item number 4.1, adoption of the regular meeting of council, May the 12th. Move adoption? Second. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Looking for receipt on a number of minutes, Heritage Commission minutes of April the 9th, Protective Services Committee, April 9th, Emergency Planning Committee minutes, March 18th, and Finance and Admin Committee minutes, April 22nd.
Move receipt, Your Worship?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Item 5.1, letter from City of Chilliwack in regards to the B.C. Assessment Regulation Proposed Amendment, Classification of Farmland. It's a letter from the City of Chilliwack Mayor's Office to Minister Corley Oaks, Minister of Community Sport and Cultural Development, in regards to B.C. Assessment Regulation Proposed Amendment, Classification of Land as Farm. It's not a very long letter, so I don't mind reading it out. "All municipalities in British Columbia are currently vulnerable to a taxation loophole that can greatly reduce municipal taxation revenue as well as school taxes, which are levied on the province's behalf. B.C. Regulation 41195, under the Assessment Act for Classification of Land as Farm Regulation, enables commercial or industrial zone land to be classified as farm for assessment and taxation purposes. The City of Chilliwack requests your consideration and support for a regulation amendment that will put an end to this loophole and have farm taxation assessment follow municipal zoning. As agriculture community, we understand the great importance of farmland and support the protection of such lands. Our concern lies with the land currently zoned for either commercial or industrial purposes that are able to receive farm classification with B.C. Assessment for municipal taxation purposes. For example, last year, an owner with land in the industrial zone was able to temporarily place animals on the land and receive farm classification with B.C. Assessment. The lost municipal taxation revenue in this occurrence was $155,000, which is a significant amount in their community. As medical marijuana grow operations begin production under the new Health Canada guidelines, there is an increasing concern that these operations will qualify for farm classification while situated in commercial or industrial zones. Our concerns are shared by municipalities throughout the Lower Mainland and across B.C. This past week, at the Lower Mainland and Local Government Association, AGM, and Conference, the City of Chilliwack has brought forward a farm assessment resolution that was passed unanimously as follows. Therefore, be it resolved that the UBCM requests that the provincial government amend the Assessment Act or associated regulation as appropriate so that the land cannot be reclassified as farm if the lands are zoned for commercial, industrial, or business purpose unless the farm use predates the zoning, is in the principal case, and the lands are continuously used for farm purposes. We greatly value agriculture and the practice of farming, but feel strongly that the property zoned for commercial and industrial use should not be permitted to utilize a loophole to receive artificially low farm assessment values for taxation. This does not represent the spirit of the regulation, nor are, it is our intent to have the language amended in the regulation, so this practice cannot continue in B.C. municipalities. Thank you for consideration of a regulation amendment that will enable taxation to follow municipal zoning." Council's wish in this piece of correspondence? Dr. Cullington?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to assume that Chilliwack will be bringing this to UBCM as a resolution, and so I think probably appropriate that we move receipt at this time and engage in the debate at UBCM.
There it chupi. Second. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Next letter is B.C. Federation of Labor in regards to commitment to B.C. shipbuilding Again, commitment to B.C. shipbuilding industry. Institutional procurement is a powerful and often underutilized economic development strategy. Over the past three or four years, both the federal government and the B.C. government have adopted new industrial development strategies aimed at renewal of B.C. shipbuilding and repair industry and its skilled workforce. In a report produced by the Columbia Institute made in B.C.'s ferries, "The Economic Benefits of the Local Ship Procurement, March 2014, Economic Modeling Shows That There Are Significant Social and Economic Benefits of Building New Ships in B.C." July 2013, B.C. ferries announced it will put three new intermediate-class ferries into service by 2016-17. The economic modeling results show the following direct, indirect, and induced impacts of B.C. shipyard construction of the three ferries. There's a series of benefits in here, as well as the renewal of a skilled shipbuilding and repair labor force, also integral to the B.C. government's new industrial strategy to rebuild a once burgeoning marine environment sector in B.C. One action leading to this renewal would be to mandate percentage of apprentices required on major public projects. The LNG Working Group, for example, recommends that 25% of overall workforce be apprentices on these projects, and that the government should consider having minimum number of apprentices on all public infrastructure projects. This recommendation was, has been accepted by the government. Federal government has made a commitment to the B.C. shipbuilding. We are asking provincial government to share the same commitment. Coordination of federal and provincial procurement is essential to bring full benefits. In closing, we are asking that you show support by passing a resolution requesting that the provincial government ensure that shipbuilding is done in British Columbia." The will of council?
Once again, is this not something that will likely come before UBCM for support versus council by council, I'm thinking? It doesn't specifically say that, but it says, you know, "Passing a resolution that provincial government ensure that shipbuilding is done in B.C."
It has been distributed to all municipal.
Yeah. So I'm just thinking it's going to come to UBCM. Yes, no? No, it won't?
I'm not aware of anyone bringing forward a resolution on it. They may, there may be someone that is planning to, but I'm not aware of that. So it looks like they're looking for a community-by-community resolution. So it might be prudent to consider passing such a resolution at our council. Certainly, we depend on the ferries, and certainly, our community depends on the work that is provided to build those ferries. I can certainly tell you of people locally who are employed in that field and have finally been put back to work in B.C. after having had to go work across the sea in China, actually, of all places, for many years, and have finally just returned to shipbuilding here on the coast. and have finally just returned to shipbuilding here on the coast.
So we got one going to UBCM and one, should we make that recommendation for, for further discussion at UBCM? Or just in look for some sort of wording around what, um, these folks are asking for? Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you through the chair. Um, I, I'm a little confused with respect to what exactly the request is and which government, uh, accepted the recommendation. It looks to me like they mean the federal government's accepted the recommendation. Um, and then they want the B.C. government to support, um, minimum number of folks on, apprentices on the, um, projects. Can we not write them back and ask whether or not they plan to bring this to UBCM? Because it's not clear to us.
The only, uh, person who can bring this forward to UBCM is a municipality. So, uh, what they're asking is for us to pass a resolution requesting that the provincial government ensure that shipbuilding is done in British Columbia, and I would so move.
Seconder?
Second.
Any further discussion?
The motion is, is that we pass a resolution. So we hereby resolve that to request the provincial government to ensure that shipbuilding is done in British Columbia.
Um, I'm okay supporting that. My concern is, is if it makes financial sense, I support that. And so the cost benefit analysis has to be done. I don't support it just because I want jobs in B.C. It has to be the right reason for the taxpayer, and that's each and every one of us. So while I want it to stay in B.C., the reality is, is sometimes it's not always feasible. So I don't know how we want to tie that in, but, um, of course I want to keep jobs local, but it has to make sense from the pocketbook.
You got an add-on?
I just wanted to say that there, there are significant number of statistics in the letter that were done through the Columbia Institute, having, uh, investigated that, that case. Uh, and, uh, fast ferries notwithstanding, uh, some of the issues that they ran into, uh, we certainly do have a number of statistics, um, that show that, uh, the, um, shipyards in British Columbia produce, um, excellent products when they're, have the right blueprints to work from.
Could we word the resolution then that will reflect where beneficial?
I guess, um, the resolution is only calling on, um, us to ensure that there is shipbuilding in British Columbia. It doesn't say that there is only ships built in British Columbia. So it, the resolution would still allow for ships to be purchased from other areas if there were a financial case to do that. Is, we're just trying to ensure that there are ships built in B.C. as well.
Councillor Lukens, are you okay with that? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried? Uh, moving into 6.1, Planning and Land Use Committee, Official Community Plan Application, OCP 14002, Royal Bay Area Plan, Machoson and Latoria Roads. And I know, um, we've got a note on this one. So staff, Mr. Borghil, you will be doing introduction of, of, um, within this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Now, as a note before I start, this is information germane to the later agenda item regarding, uh, possible first and second reading of, um, bylaw number 1543. But I'll, uh, state it now because it is, uh, also pertinent to the item before us. In response to the Committee of the Whole's recommendation, staff met with representatives of the developer to discuss the outstanding issues within the proposed Royal Bay Area Plan. These discussions progressed quickly, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank our contract planner, Dan Wong, for his continued assistance and the collaborative tact taken by the applicant's team while working with city staff. Each of the 10 areas identified in committee recommendation were addressed by the applicant with changes to the area plan. In some cases, pertinent policy statements were simply amended to reflect what was asked for in the recommendations. In others, compromises were struck to address key stated desires of the developer while achieving changes that staff feel will create the intended results for the city and the larger public interest. Based on these amendments, staff are now comfortable with the proposed wording of the Royal Bay Area Plan, and it is our opinion that the applicant's adequately addressed committee's recommendations. Several minor technological areas in the area plan were also corrected that do not affect the intent or applicability of the document. Please also note that the version of the area plan as circulated should be amended such that the word southwest in the first line of the second paragraph of page three of the area plan be replaced with southeast. A simple but important correction. This typo was caught after circulation was made. As for the recommendations, which I will read verbatim prior to summarizing the corresponding responses, they are as follows. So recommendation A1, increase the robustness of policy statements concerning sustainability features to be incorporated into the development in alignment with OCP objectives for greenhouse gas reduction, energy efficiency, e.g. efficient building design, options for solar, thermal, PV, electric vehicle charging upgrades, district energy, and so forth. To address this new, to address this, new policy statements calling for sustainability features to be sought and identified at the time of rezoning or development permit were created. This will give the city the ability to work with the developer to implement sustainability features in both residential and commercial mixed-use areas. The approving officer may look to the official plan, including its policy, at the time of subdivision to determine how to approach these requirements, if in fact rezoning conflicts with the OCP. This would give him the ability to address issues even if a rezoning application is not forthcoming in the immediate future. Onto recommendation A2, as follows. Prepares a terms of reference framework for the issues to be addressed as part of the sub-area plans for the Commons and the Landing to be incorporated into appendix of the Royal Bay Area Plan. In response to this recommendation, the applicant has agreed to policies mandating the creation of sub-area plans, which include information pertaining to site plans, land uses, density, building massing, architectural form and character, and general building design. These sub-area plans would be triggered at the time of rezoning or any other development approvals affecting these areas. They would be enshrined within a Section 219 covenant to be approved by city council, and I'd just like to note they were included within the policies themselves as opposed to new appendices. Recommendation A3, enhance the policy statements regarding commercial floor space to establish minimum amounts of commercial development in the Commons and the Landing neighborhoods. These policy statements have been enhanced to include 80,000 square feet of commercial space as a minimum target. So the key word there is minimum, which was lacking before. Recommendation A4, enhance policy statements concerning the designation of waterfront public space, e.g. park dedication, such that it includes reference to alternative civic uses such as the siting of the Colwood Performing Arts Centre. To address this recommendation, the policy statements were revised as follows. They now state, permit use of designated parkland for alternative civic or cultural uses and facilities. This would allow the city to explore several very exciting options for the integration of the proposed performing arts centre within designated park areas, including waterfront areas. Recommendation A5, enhance the policy statements concerning Murray's Pond with the view towards designating the area encompassing the surrounding remnant natural vegetation as protected open space, and add a policy statement to protect habitat values along the foreshore. In response to the area, the area plan was changed to require that, as, I'll read this. This is direct from the policy, a special study area. This study area would be correct, would be created for the protection of Murray's Pond and surrounding natural vegetation prior to development. Policy was also added calling for the recognition of the importance of habitat values along the foreshore and immediate upland areas. The city may act upon this to protect habitat via the development permit process and required park plans, which I'll speak to later. Recommendation A6, enhance the policy statement regarding the park management plan with the view towards developing a nature scape program to address the capital and operational requirements for future dedicated areas. Although the term nature scapeing was not included in the final wording, the applicant did commit to new policy that mandates a submission of parks plan. And these parks plans would include the design, the capital and maintenance requirements for the, for the parks, and would also require the city's approval of said plans. This will give us the opportunity to address specific park issues in a coordinated and professional way, such that, such as by drawing on qualified professionals, such as consultants, to answer questions regarding slope stability and its maintenance using native plants. So we didn't have the word nature scapeing, but I think we've got a way to require it. Recommendation A7, strengthen the policy statements with the implementation, implementation section of the area plan. Do not just consider the recommendations, but to incorporate them. This was pretty straightforward. We, we got the word incorporate in there as opposed to consider. A8, include a policy statement that all aging-in-place housing units shall be designed and constructed to the B.C. Building Code provisions for adaptable dwelling units. This is another easy one. They simply created a new policy as per the recommendation. Recommendation A9, that a foreshore erosion invasive species management plan and vegetation restoration plan be prepared at an appropriate time. The applicant has attempted to address this by agreeing to a policy statement as follows. Quote, ensure that invasive weeds are controlled and on a reasonable frequency, keep the city informed of progress and plans, and to explore with the city innovative methods to achieve early restoration of the undeveloped portions of the property. Staff understand that without agreed scope or terms of reference for these plans, the applicant may feel reticent to commit to them. Instead, they have stated their best intentions through these policies, and staff will have the opportunity to coordinate related actions via other upcoming development approvals such as subdivision, rezoning, and development permits. So clearly there was a compromise in this case, but we do have several ways to, uh, extract, uh, these plans from the developer. And lastly, recommendation A10, that staff be directed to work in good faith with the applicant to incorporate comments made by the public and committee at the May 10th, excuse me, May 20th, 2014, Committee of the Whole meeting into the ongoing planning of the Royal Bay development site where appropriate. So this one was a little bit difficult in the sense that, um, there was a lot said at that meeting, but we tried to take some of the spirit of those comments into the negotiations the last couple of days. And we acted as best we could through their negotiations while focusing on the other specific recommendations. And we will do so as feasible in the upcoming planning processes. And definitely considering all of the, uh, concerns about dust, noise, and whatnot that has been raised tonight and at the Committee of the Whole. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a, a question to staff. I mean, the, the recommendation that we made at Committee of the Whole, um, would you like, is it, has it become redundant, or would you like to repeat it as it's a good way of kind of reinforcing that, yes, this is the direction that you want to, to go forward? I'm just clarifying before I make the motion.
Uh, through the chair, it's an interesting procedural question. Later in the agenda, you have the opportunity to give first reading to the amended bylaw as circulated. That would imply that, uh, these recommendations were acted upon. So therefore, I don't believe we need to amend the, uh, recommendation as stated, but I'd look to the Director of Administration to confirm that.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not quite as familiar with all of this that the Acting Director of Planning is. Um, I think it's just very critical that the, uh, recommendation, if it's being passed the way that it's worded, is completely and fully encompassed in the changes that have been made to the, uh, bylaw that is being brought forward. So we have to make sure whatever we've agreed to has been captured in the bylaw itself.
So it's appropriate to confirm the, the committee's recommendation at this time? In that case, I would so move.
Second.
Discussion? Councillor Lukens?
Um, just to remind Jeff, he has 25 days left. For those of you that don't know, I, I kept pushing Jeff at the meeting with respect to a communications plan because it's something that, it was expressed, as a number of you have spoken of tonight, um, with respect to engaging their neighbors and being good neighbors and sharing more information with all of us. Um, it's something that we all wish to have. Um, I just want to speak, Madam Mayor, and maybe you can add to this, but it came up again this evening, and I, sorry, I don't recall the lady's name sitting at the end there, with respect to the Mining Act. And as I understand it, the Mining Act stays in place until such time as Royal Bay is built out in its entirety, which was stated at the meeting. But I also understand, um, that there's nothing that the province will do with that. It just stays open until the development is complete. And if something did come of it within, you know, that enacted the Mining Act again, it would be the provincial government's responsibility to address that, not the municipal government. The provincial government, I understand, would be more than happy to download it to us. But us as taxpayers of Colwood, it's not really something I would support. Um, I know we're all taxpayers at the provincial level as well, but at least it gets spread amongst the, the breadth of everybody versus just Colwood taxpayers. So, um, I'm quite comfortable with it staying at the level that it's at, at the provincial level. Um, I don't know if that gives you any clarification regarding your question, but hopefully some. Um, I just also wanted to speak about, and this was in one of the policy statements that, um, Ian spoke of, um, regarding the commercial space. And, uh, again, I reiterate, um, with respect to, 16 years ago, the commercial space was 10 times what we're talking about today. It's apparently not relevant in today's world. Uh, I want to reiterate, five years from now, today's number of 80,000, uh, may not be relevant either. So I appreciate that it is a minimum and will be reconsidered as we go in forward, and I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. I thank you for the work that both parties have done with respect to coming up and revisiting the policies and making them a little bit tighter for us. I think we need to remember tonight that we are speaking of the OCP amendment. Um, a number of issues will still yet to be addressed in the, um, rezoning and the subdivision approvals, et cetera. So there's still a number of steps to go through. But tonight, we're specifically speaking of the OCP amendment, which is the overarching document that will see this development, um, happen. It is not the specific details, it's the overarching development, or overarching document. So I just want to make sure that we're all clear that it's not set in stone what happens here tonight. It's a guiding document. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to touch on Councillor Lukens' comments, there are a number of restrictive and conditional covenants, 10 of them, that were in that original report. And it speaks to things of mining and logging and grubbing and, and that sort of thing that are part and parcel of that site, that, um, we have put restrictions on to say that it does not happen. So, um, it, it sits above that whole mining, um, fear of it turning back into an active gravel pit. Uh, I think some of those folks are somewhat concerned with that, so we'll look at that. Councillor Day?
Thank you. Uh, just speaking to that point about how, uh, the Mines Act does apply to the development, uh, because I've been here since 1987 or '06, actually, and lived through the active mining phase, uh, including blasting every day at 2:00 P.M. And when we had a, an earthquake at 10 o'clock at night, I thought, what the heck are they doing blasting at this time of night? And it was 3.4 on the Richter scale. So that just shows you, um, some of what those of us in, in the neighborhood have lived through, and it has been very disruptive and difficult. Uh, it was my understanding that the Mines Act, um, had, uh, little, actually, no provision for being enacted in a residential area. The Mines Act was written for, out in the middle of nowhere, that's where mines are generally located. Uh, and my- And my understanding of why the Mines Act still applies is that the reclamation process is not complete until the development process is complete. So, which I am somewhat disappointed in, because there was a rather large and diminishing, I guess, every year as the winds blew quite a bit, pile of topsoil that was to be put back on the land. And I'm not sure that we had as much to finish with as we started with, for whatever reasons. And I am concerned with how that Mines Act may apply, so I would like to hear from staff on the jurisdictional issues related to that item.
Through the chair. We haven't had a lot of time since the Committee of the Whole Meeting to connect with our counterparts and the provincial government. I tried to do that. We were contacted over a year ago by the person working for the permanent ministry. And we were directed to a code covering the reclamation of mines. Now, I don't have a perfect understanding of the cross-jurisdictional issues because we haven't been able to connect with the province since the Committee of the Whole Meeting. But I understand that the Mines Act applies in this case by the virtue of the fact that this is a former mine site, and therefore is beholden to the rules about reclamation. It's an interesting case because you've got a mine that I don't think the Act necessarily had in mind when they were drafting regulation about reclamation. It's simply a very large, open-pit gravel operation, as opposed to a mine that has a lot of chemicals and potential mineral problems. That being said, staff will continue to work with the province and ensure that our interests are protected regardless of provincial regulation. It's clear that we do have jurisdiction over land use and development regulations of this mine, as long as it doesn't interfere with the reclamation process that they're required to do.
Thank you. Follow-up? Did you want me to make my further comments now, or?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So I do have still some concern in terms of how the site might be considered for future quarrying, and that we would have little or no control over whether or not that were to happen. We had little enough control in 1992, when the blasting began. The other issue that I wanted to bring up was just in regards to the draft minutes have kind of some errors in them, and that's not through anyone's fault. It was very difficult to hear in the church, the mics were very boomy. And I bring this up only because I feel that, A, I've been quoted saying almost exact opposite of what I was intending to say, and I'm concerned whether or not my comments were heard in the church, or if it was just the recorders didn't hear what I said, or if everyone didn't hear what I said. So on page four of the draft minutes, it says that I suggested that the quarry near Latoria Creek Park would be a great asset as an area used by mountain bikers. The point I was making was that we needed to prevent mountain bikers from getting into Latoria Creek Park through that access, and that a bike trail would be welcome at the end of Grattan Road. What I said there was that I wasn't sure how the bike trail could work at the end of Grattan Road because of the steepness of the site. So I just wanted to correct those couple of issues. I also did mention the transit access on Painter Road, which was shown in one of the maps, and suggested that the transit access would be difficult there, and that it would create a hazard for a multi-use pedestrian cyclist path to get in there. I also did mention that we needed additional parkland for Latoria Creek Park, because what has already been dedicated is very steep, and some flat land at the top would do an excellent job of being able to create a loop trail. As well as those comments, I would just add that I have some discomfort with the notion that was suggested that we would have market reactive housing numbers in our OCP. I feel that we quite often have had amendments come forward. Obviously, the plan that was made in 1999 has now been amended to a different plan, so that is certainly something that can be done over time. So I feel a little bit uncomfortable with the flexible numbers. And I'll leave my comments at that.
So, Recommendation, you have a second, or?
It's been moved to the second.
We're good? We're good. Go. Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Finance and Admin Report Engineering Chief Admin Office Potential Hazardous Condition of 1913 Suk Road, formerly known as Capital City Center. Will that be? Helen? You're going to go?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, staff received notice a little over two weeks ago that Farmer Construction was planning to remove the fence around the Capital City Center site, where they have an unfinished building. And staff are very concerned because that could pose a hazard to the public, because there are a lot of steep drop-offs. There's an excavation that fills with water and construction debris and other problems. So what we, we went and got legal advice, and also in the meantime, we tried to ask Farmer Construction if they could extend the date from which they would remove the fence. And as of the end of today, we haven't heard anything yet. And they were supposed to, they said they would remove the fence today, and I haven't heard whether they have or not yet. So our lawyers have recommended that we do a remedial action requirement to the owners, and we're allowed to do this under the community charter to keep the fence up. So we provided the owners with a copy of the staff report and let them know that we are planning on considering this tonight, and they could make representation to the council this evening as part of this. So there are several options that the lawyer gave us, allow the fence to be removed by Farmer and leave the site open, pass a modified resolution to what the lawyers have given us, or pass a resolution in this report imposing a remedial action requirement to the owners. The financial implications, if the owners keep the fence up, there are no financial implications to Callwood. But if the owner doesn't maintain the fence, the city could continue to maintain it. And since writing this report, we heard that it's been costing about $750 a month for Farmer to maintain it. Another option would be to buy the fence, but if we purchased that, then we would be required for inspecting and maintaining the fence for who knows how long. And the lawyer said that we would be eligible for receiving the cost back, the same way as we would be expected to get our taxes back at the end of the creditor protection. But we don't know how long that may be, how long we may be out of the money. So staff have included the recommendation as recommended by our lawyers. And normally, for a remediation requirement, the owner gets 14 days to ask council to reconsider if council does pass the resolution. But in this instance, because of the urgency of the situation, the lawyers have recommended that we give the owner, the owner can have three days from the date on which the notice of the charter is provided. And if the owner hasn't completed any or all of the actions within seven days after notice of the resolution, then the city are authorized to undertake the work. And if this resolution is passed tonight, staff are ready with a letter to representatives of the owners who are here tonight, and to all of the charge holders, we would send the letter by registered mail to notify them of this as well.
I will come forward. Mayor Hamilton, councilors. Thanks for the invitation to come forward tonight. My name's John Parkinson. I'm the chief executive officer of the lead group of companies and represent the owner of the property. We are certainly very aware of the sensitivity for a safe site, and certainly are aware of the need for protection around that site. We do not oppose the recommendation, frankly. It needs to be protected, the fence needs to remain in place. We will work with the secured lenders who are on the property. Unfortunately, as you know, we are under CCAA at this point, and therefore, the actions that we have in front of us are, we are able to take, are somewhat limited by the court at this point. But we have reached out to the secured lenders to request a preventative disbursement to meet the needs around maintaining the fence and keeping it in place. So I think our conclusion would be, after discussion with Don Garner and Jeremy Ratcher from the company, that we certainly do not oppose the recommendation. You have our commitment that we will work with the secured lenders, make sure that their fence remains in place or there's adequate action taken as quickly as possible, frankly.
Thank you. I appreciate those words, and I'm glad to hear it because it's important for the safety of our community and those that live around the area. I had expressed concern to engineering a couple of weeks ago about the dilapidated look of some of the fence and it, you know, leaning over, and, you know, could we not get the school kids to paint and put art up along there? Because it's on our main corridor, it is not a lively, beautiful location at this point in time. So I don't know what the opportunity is. I know you mentioned it's somewhat limited, but I think there's some opportunities to allow our community to get involved to make that site look better until such time as it's up and running again. But I will leave that with you. And engineering, to see if we can do something, but I appreciate your efforts in this part so that we can move forward and leave it as is. Thank you.
Counselor Day?
I'm just wondering, who is maintaining liability insurance on the site, and whether or not they should be informed of our concerns? Because whether or not the site is fenced, I would imagine would impact the cost of the insurance for the site.
John, do you have that out?
Yeah, I can certainly speak to that. There is liability insurance maintained on the site at this point. We would, again, look to work with the secured lenders if they take control of the site, which is one of the potential outcomes, to ensure that there is continuing liability insurance and that there is full awareness of your concerns. I could also add that as of 6:45, the fence was still in place. And Mr. Garner and I actually walked the perimeter today and did, I'm not an engineer, so I won't give you an opinion, but it was, it was secure, I believe. Don? Yes?
And I guess maybe to follow up on Counselor Day's inquiry is whether or not we have information around who the insured carrier is to be able to pass along those concerns with. Do we have that information, or is it broad enough going through the processes we have Anybody know? No? Not required? Okay. But stand by in case we do.
Certainly.
Counselor Martin?
I'll just move the recommendation.
Second. Any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 6.2.2, replacement of International Crane Truck Unit 18 vehicle purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The reason this is coming forward was this was budgeted for this year, that we were looking at replacing in Public Works the International Crane Truck Unit 18. We were looking at doing a 10-year lease, and then it was basically discovered that we have enough money in our reserve funds to actually purchase the unit outright, which would save the city $42,000, well, $42,950 in interest. So it came to FAC, it was discussed, and there was a decision made that, and a recommendation, that the fleet supervisor be directed to proceed with finalizing the specifications and purchasing of a replacement international crane truck from P&amp;R Western Star Trucks for delivery in late 2014, and that the funds for this purchase come from the Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund. The only other thing, the reason it's coming before us, is that there is a three- to six-month lead time. This truck is used for snow removal, and so if we delay a decision on this, then we will miss the next winter season with, for this truck. So hence the reason there's sort of a decision needing to be made this evening. And I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I haven't.
Counselor Cullington?
Thank you. I get the sense this may have been discussed a bit at committee, but I'm certainly all over saving $42,950 in interest. But just, again, it's this kind of feeling of, do we know what our reserve funds are there, how much is in them, and if we use money from this fund, is the stuff that then doesn't happen because that funding is not there? So I'll support the recommendation, but again, it's kind of feeling like we need to have that good understanding of what's there.
Through the chair?
Yep.
It was discussed at FAC. The issue is, if we chose not to spend the money that isn't on a reserve fund, in that we went to a lease, it basically lowers our borrowing capacity. So it's sort of six or half dozen the other, that we definitely could just lease it. But then, of course, that amount that we're leasing would no longer be available from a borrowing capacity standpoint. So if we had another project that we wanted to borrow money from, we would have that much less, whereas this allows us to take it out of the reserve fund, or the Future Operating Expenditures Reserve Fund, and just purchase it right now. And there's definitely a discussion regarding our reserve funds, which will be coming forward in, hopefully, in the next month, of what is actually in all the reserve funds.
Thank you. Counselor Lukens?
Yeah, it doesn't state here, but what is the cost that we're looking to expend for this vehicle?
Yeah, it's, yeah, go ahead. There were two numbers, and I can't remember the.
I believe the number was $185,000.
To buy it outright?
Yeah, that's correct. And there was five, I gave you a number of $500,000, and I believe that's how much was in the total Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund.
Steph?
Just to confirm, I believe with the option to buy right out versus leasing, I believe there would be savings over the 10-year with a five-year lease with an option to renew of about $42,000.
Steph?
I just want to mention as well, at the Finance and Administration Committee meeting, part of the discussion that the Director of Finance had, in addition to the part of the discussion that the Director of Finance had, in addition to the potential to save and the reduced borrowing or the reduced effect on borrowing capacity because of our future plans, perhaps for sewage treatment, whatever the case may be, she did identify that we do have a Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund. She identified that there is some money that has already been allocated out of that fund, but there is more than sufficient money that's uncommitted in the fund and it's an uncommitted $185,000 that she's recommending the outright purchase that won't affect any other plans or approvals that council's already put into play. I would also like to suggest that the recommendation speaks to the amount of money and not just an open-ended purchase.
I'm happy to make that amendment or amendment recommendation. So if we have an actual dollar amount, $185,000?
Counselor Day?
Thank you. And I'd just like to point out that neither the balance of money in the fund nor the full cost of the truck was actually included in the report that went to the Finance and Administration Committee. And I'd just like to request that we have those for any future reports on purchasing because I think that's helpful for us all to be on the same page.
Thank you. And I just wanted to be clear because in the body of this report, it refers to Future Expenditure Reserve Fund in one location and then I see in, or in two locations, and then in the recommendation, it's talking about the Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund. Well, in the first paragraph, it refers to the city used the Future Expenditure Reserve Fund. And then it says lower down there again, the International Crane Truck Unit be purchased, not leased, and the Future Expenditure Reserve Fund be used to pay for the truck. Then we get into the resolution or the recommendation, pardon me, and it says there that the purchase will come from the Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund. Now, is it a cut and paste? Is it a error? Is, are we talking about the one in the same account?
I, through the chair, I believe, and I do wish our finance director was here, but I do believe that it is actually the Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund and they just excluded the operating in the preamble.
Just one other comment. I did read this, but I forgot. In the report that went to FAC, in the summary, it does state, "The approved budget as adopted by council on the 24th of March 2014 is $185,000." It just didn't come across into the council's report. I would also support those numbers being put in the council's report because we don't always remember what's in the committee reports.
If council, through the mayor, if council could just give us a moment, we're just looking at that report to see what the actual proper name of the reserve account is supposed to be. Future Operating Expenditure Reserve Fund.
Okay, so that's what is in the resolution, so we can stick with that. I'm fine. Anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Pardon?
I would just like to suggest that based on the comments of Counselor Day, that a motion be put on the table to keep it in the record and provide direction to staff about future reports, including the, sort of the balances that are in our reserve funds, what's committed, what's not committed, so that it becomes part of our action instead of something we have to capture through reading minutes.
So I would move that, I'm just trying to get my wording straight from what you were suggesting, that we, all future reports include the balance of the fund and the costs being recommended for any future purchase? Be included in the report, sorry.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Item 6.2.3, memo, Counselor Rob Martin, in regards to Greater Victoria Social Media Twitter Emergency Services.
Thank you. This is for Sherry and Gordy. During the emergency preparation meeting, one of the things that was presented, if you look on page 68 or the second page of the memo, you will see under alerts and bulletins with the common hashtags, those are things that we should probably be subscribing to if you are on Twitter. These are actual provincial government things. So for example, if there's an earthquake, the hashtag earthquake would actually give us the official thing of what's happening with the earthquake. So it's not, it's actually being produced by the provincial government. And the same with all those other ones. So if you're worried about the volcano that's sitting out in central Sanage, you could just do this backslash volcano, and then when it blows, we'll all know. And the, our city website has subscribed to all these ambers. So they're just there for you and I just wanted to provide it. And it is for general consumption as well, so we do encourage just the general public to subscribe to these as well.
Is there a recommendation or just receive?
Counselor Collington and then Dugan?
Thank you. Just a quick note of follow-up on page two under Colwood. It gives the @cityofcolwood address and then it gives a second one, and we did get a note from our emergency services coordinator saying that is actually a personal one. Could we please use @CWDEPC? So just for the, just for the record. Thanks.
And yeah, we just need a motion to receive.
She stole my thunder.
Oh, there you go. Motion to receive?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? 6.2.4, Rock the Shores Ambulance On Sight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, or Madam Mayor, pardon me, excuse me, pardon me. Basically, this one's simple, that Rock the Shores is planning a three-day festival, as we're all aware, with 12,500 people per day. The fire department will be bringing extra volunteer staff, as well as there will be bylaw and police. And in addition, there is St. John's ambulance that will be in the event for first aid. However, St. John's does not provide transportation, and it was basically discussed and was encouraged since this festival is in the municipality of Colwood, that it is our duty to make sure that there is proper transportation available. As you're aware, there's only one ambulance now in the West Shore. So if there are another call, so for example, if somebody broke their leg at the festival, St. John's was dealing with them, but there was another event, they may wait for an hour to two hours for transportation to the hospital. So the emergency prep committee basically recommended that we require the festival promoter to have one ambulance on site at all times. And basically what that would do is the ambulance has also acknowledged that they would, if someone had to be transported, another ambulance from Greater Victoria would come and be at the festival, so there's always one ambulance at the festival and especially there for transportation. And it is, since it is in within Colwood, it would be followed under our permits and so that we're basically requesting that the city recommend and suggest. Final note on this was in year one festival, they were required to have an ambulance, and they did, and for some reason last year it slipped through the cracks and they did not actually have an ambulance on site. So we think it's quite important that we actually encourage them that they have that. So it was recommended by the committee and I recommend to council that the organizers of the Rock the Shores event be advised that their permit will require that one basic life support or BLS ambulance unit be on site at all times during the three-day event, starting from when the gates open until the closing of the gates. And also move that.
Comments, discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. I'd just like to speak to the necessity of this. I was at Rock the Shores and I did see at least one person transported by ambulance from Rock the Shores last year, although it was an excellent venue and all, their crowd control was excellent, the acts were really good. It's all around a very well-done festival, but the reality is with that many people there, things happen.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Counselor Martin. Is the promoter aware of this request? Since this is coming in kind of?
They should be aware of it since it was an actual requirement, but for some reason they didn't fulfill that requirement last year, so we thought we would make it part of the permit. And it looks like our CAO has more information.
I also had the opportunity last week to sit down with the promoter. I did discuss this as well as some other recommendations prior to event approval being issued by the city. I will be following up with the promoter tomorrow now that this is confirmed through a resolution.
Thank you. We were in receipt of an email late, just before the meeting started, around this, and I've taken the opportunity to pull it up. And under first aid provision, it reads in this event application to the city, "St. John Ambulance will be present during the event. The hired security company will provide level-three first aid attendance during setup and strike." So it's setup and takedown, there'll be security folks providing level-three, and St. John Ambulance does not refer in any way to provincial ambulance. So this is what's before us as far as the application that's come in, and we clearly have another direction here. So it is important that we get this information to them as early as possible.
That's through you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify as well, it was a requirement last year, they just didn't do it. So this isn't anything new, it's been required every year. They just didn't do it last year. We're trying to ensure that they do it this year.
Yep. So we have a recommendation before us. Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Madam Mayor, can I jump in for just one second? Just because we were kind of rushed on that motion, I just wanted to clarify the wording of my motion in regard to the report, and that any future report coming to council should include the purchase price, the fund it's coming from, and the balance available in the fund. Just, I felt like we left that kind of hanging in the air.
They like those words.
Okay. And I've got it written down here if you want it.
So we also have 6.3. Counselor Logan sings how you pulled this one to the attention under Protective Services. Can you take that one for me, please?
Certainly, thank you, Your Worship. Following the announcement from the provincial government of the closure of the youth custody center, the city of Colwood, along with our friends and neighbors in the other communities, have written the province to oppose its closure for a number of obvious reasons. Subsequent to that, Vic PD and other organizations have stated they do not have adequate facilities to house youth for remand. Consequently, West Shore RCMP is being looked at as the natural choice. And as an owner of that building and as a service provider, a recipient from the RCMP, we should have some concern as well about housing youth at the detachment who are going and waiting for court. As a facility, as much like Vic PD, Sanage PD, and every other detachment, just does not have the facilities to house youth, and it represents a bit of a download to municipalities as well in that we are required to pick up, cover some of the costs that are not covered by the province. And Langford has passed a resolution, I understand, the other building owners will be passing this similar resolution, and therefore I recommend that council pass, that council resolve to not house youth in the West Shore RCMP detachment cells as the facility is inadequate to house youth.
Second. Discussion from council? Counselor Day?
Just to let you know that just today was finalizing the wording for a letter from the Victoria Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, which I chair, which also called on the provincial government, among other things, to meet with that committee who is charged with being aware of the circumstances for youth and families who may come into contact with the justice system. And one of the requests that our very knowledgeable members on the committee have made is that the government look at providing bail beds as another use that could be made of the custody center facilities that would be completely complementary to youth who are required to be in secure care.
Thank you. Anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
One question, Counselor Day had come up, is it around UBCM? Is there anyone that you know of that's making this an actual UBCM? It was discussed in our, at our previous resolution, but I don't think we actually...
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone that is bringing it forward so far. Counselor Green from Oak Bay was the one who got the wording going. It does need some considerable refinement to make it a Gold Star resolution because Gold Star resolutions have not more than two whereas clauses, so that does take some wordsmithing to make that happen. If, as Chair of the Family Court and Youth Justice Committee, I'd be willing to put some effort into crafting a Gold Star resolution if no one else is already doing that.
And I haven't heard either, and that's why I wanted to just maybe...
Yeah, if Oak Bay isn't already in process with that, I don't want to step on their toes, but if they're not in process, I would be happy to bring that forward.
Then we'll work on that. Thank you. Moving on to our bylaw section, that will be bylaw number 1469, final reading for Colwood Main Sewer Local Service Area Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization Number 598, 2001, Amendment Number 9.
Move final?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1470, final reading, Colwood West Sewer Local Area Services Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 625, 2001.
Move final?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1539, third reading only, Colwood Land Use Bylaw, Number 151, 1989, Amendment Number 139. Bylaw number 1539.
Move third reading?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Bylaw number 1538, third reading only, Colwood Land Use Bylaw, Number 151, 1989, Amendment?
Move third?
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Bylaw number 1543, first and second readings only, Colwood Official Community Plan, Bylaw Number 999, 2008. Staff, will you take the introduction on this one, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Two things I want to reiterate further to what I discussed at the, earlier in the meeting with regard to the committee of the whole recommendation. Would like to propose that small typographical error, replacing the word southeast on page three, the second paragraph, first line of the proposed area plan be amended. And that also, council be asked to make the following resolution. This is essentially to ensure that we are meeting the requirements of the Local Government Act as it pertains to official plan amendments. I'd like to thank the Director of Administration for making sure this happens in a diligent way. So staff, we're asking that the following resolution be considered, that council acknowledge that Colwood Official Plan Bylaw, Number 999, 2008, Amendment Number 6, Royal Bay Area Plan, Bylaw Number 1543, 2014, currently granted, first reading only, has been considered in conjunction with the city of Colwood's five-year financial plan, that any waste management plan that is applicable to the city and considers them to be consistent. So...
So that will fall in after we give first reading?
Correct.
So I'll move introduction. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? One question before we just move into the next step, though, to our Director of Administration. In... In my, in our agenda notes here, we've got bylaw reading first time, followed by public hearing, and then a second time. Are we going one and two, and then public hearing? Are we just a bit out of order in the listing?
I believe that the bylaw was drafted using an old format, because our council procedure bylaw changed a number of months ago to say first reading, second reading, and then public hearing.
Yes.
So it's just an error that we'll correct.
So I just wanted to have that identified in there?
Move second?
Nope.
Oh, nope. Before we give, before we give second reading, we have a resolution to be considered, as was read by our director, our Deputy Director of Planning, that council acknowledge that Colwood Official Community Plan Bylaw, number 999, 2008, Amendment Number Six for the Royal Bay Area Plan, bylaw number 1543, 2014, currently granted, the first reading only, has been considered in conjunction with the City of Colwood's five-year financial plan and any waste management plan that is applicable to the city, and considers them to be consistent. Need a move and a seconder?
I'll move it.
Second?
Discussion, anybody? On that one? Counselor Day?
I just have to point out that we have not been provided with the five-year plan. I haven't seen it since budget.
Question?
Somebody's going? Was there any staff response on that one?
Ian wants to respond.
This resolution is simply to acknowledge that the Local Government Act requires that all officially planned amendments take into consideration the five-year financial plan. It's staff's opinion that this application does not have meaningful bearing on our five-year app, our financial plan. The five years of development that we expect from this project will be self-sufficient in terms of the application fees that they will pay us for application work. The majority, if not all, of the servicing requirements will be paid for through contributions from developer, in the form of development cost charges, amended contributions, and other ways that the financial compensation for the cost of development are provided to the city.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Second reading looking for?
Move second.
Second, second. Discussion? Counselor Day?
Thank you. Among the concerns that I feel, I'm still hopeful that the concerns will be addressed further on in the development permit process, but I don't, at this point in time, feel comfortable enough to vote in favor in terms of, there's a very deep pond that's been left in the quarry, for example, which I feel poses a liability issue, and other issues that I, I just feel are very up in the air, in terms of what is going to be done with them, so I won't be supporting the application.
Anyone else? Counselor Cullington?
Thank you, Madam Man. I just wanted to have a chance to say thank you again to staff and the BCIMC team for pulling this together and doing all of those kind of final changes in fairly short order. I think there are probably still areas in the plan where I would love to see more definitive wording, but as pointed out by Counselor Lukens earlier, this is the high-level piece, and maybe just as an opportunity to reiterate to the BCIMC team that I think what you're hearing is sort of council is very much behind that, that direction to staff, and so we do take very seriously all of those wonderful commitments you've made in there. So we're looking forward to them, to them all happening. So this is an exciting development. It's a very big change in our community, and very happy to see it moving forward. It's always that wonderful devil in the details and making sure that we take advantage of this fabulous opportunity, and really make it something that we're all incredibly proud of. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Martin?
Thank you. I would also share Counselor Cullington's feeling. I sometimes worry that perhaps we get lost a little bit in the details and forget that this is sort of the big picture and the celebration time. This is an awesome opportunity, that we're moving from an ugly gravel pit that's been sitting there forever, and we're moving forward. And this is something that I think the community's going to celebrate long-term. I think it's going to be a huge economic driver. I think it's going to be a huge thing for our community. And I'm, I'm just, I'm thrilled and very, very excited that this project's moving forward, and I can't support it enough, because I think there's always going to be issues. I think I've heard that we're willing to work through those issues, hopefully resolve that makes the community happy and creates a win-win-win for everybody, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Looking to move in camera? Thank you, folks.